But last spring, a forum was held at the Sonoma Grange on this subject with two speakers on each side, pro and con. And tonight, two of those speakers are joining us again to briefly present, rather, their viewpoints for our information. So they'll each have five minutes to present. And then Lisa, are you set up to remind them when they get to about four minutes? Okay, great. I'll wave something. So then we'll devote about 15 minutes to a brief discussion, first among the trustees, and then if there's some public comment or questions. And then I'll have a few remarks as a wrap-up. So we're looking at coming in in about a half an hour. It may not be the world's most definitive discussion, but we want to bring people's awareness to this issue and allow them to follow up as well on their own and learn more about it. So first, our spokespersons. I spoke to them both, and they were very agreeable to whatever order, so we decided that speaking on the pro side for fluoridation and leading off would be Dr. Anthony Fernandez, a Sonoma resident who practices dentistry in Santa Rosa. And then speaking on the con side will be Dr. Robert Adams, who practices chiropractic here in Sonoma as well. So gentlemen, welcome. And Dr. Fernandez, if you'd like to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you for those opening remarks. Good evening, board members. As you said, my name's Anthony Fernandez. I've been a resident here in the county and actually the town of Sonoma 26 years. We have three sons that we raised here in the valley. A board member just met with a test with Presswood, Altamira, Adell, and also the high school. They're all employed by now, so that's good. Thank you, guys. Yeah, so my name is Anthony, and I'm a graduate of the University of California, San Francisco School of Dentistry. Even though I live here in Sonoma, my office is up in Santa Rosa. And something exciting's been happening. The county's been looking at the idea of water fluoridation. And if you're a dentist, that's super exciting. Most of the state is already fluoridated. Most of the nation currently receives water fluoridation through the public water systems. First, the reason why we're looking at this issue is some of the problem is tooth decay is a serious problem. Yes, it's one of the most common health problems. Kids miss school and get lower grades. According to the Sonoma County Smile Survey of 2009, 1 in 6 kindergarteners are 16 percent and 1 in 6 third graders, 17 percent, have untreated tooth decay. Every day in Sonoma County, 10 to 12 kids in Sonoma County have to go general anesthesia with all its risk to treat severe dental decay. Others develop pain, abscesses, and miss school or suffer the loss of teeth. The reason why I'm here tonight is life is better with teeth. More important for the school board to understand that children with recent tooth pain were four times more likely to have a GPA below the median score. And also, kids with dental problems are more likely to miss school days. Teens were found especially to be affected with dental problems, demonstrating feelings of worthlessness, unhappiness, and unfriendliness. School absences averages of six days in school year and 2.1 related dental issues among elementary students. This is all California data that was generated. So the tooth decay is a problem. It still continues to be a problem. It's multifaceted. It's not any one issue. The county is working on what they call their Five Pillars for Improving Dental Health. Number one is access to dental care. Number two would be dental sealants. Three is fluoride varnishes. Four is education. And the fifth one is looking at fluoridating the water system for our community to help improve public health. What is fluoride? Fluoride is present in nature. Ocean water has twice as much fluoride as water fluoridation. The Russian River and some of the local wells in town here have natural levels of fluoride. Water fluoridation simply takes fluoride from the ground of rocks and standardizes it a certain set that protects the teeth without causing minimal side effects that we feel. It's very safe. In fact, the studies are, they've been, there's 50 years of studies on this. It's one of the top 10 public health successes of all time. We have a recent statement just this year from the attorney, from the Surgeon General. Surgeon General Dr. Regina Benjamin said the following, "Fluoridation's effectiveness in preventing tooth decay is not limited to children, but extends throughout life, resulting in fewer and less severe cavities." Dr. Benjamin wrote, "In fact, each generation born since the implementation of water fluoridation has enjoyed better dental health than the generation of that that preceded it." And I contest that's true. I see my patients who grew up before fluoridation, mouthful of root canals, crowns, missing teeth, dentures. And as the fluoridation came along for toothpaste and fluoride, but also people who grew up in fluoridated areas, not this area unfortunately, that's why I'm busy. But in areas where they had fluoride, they do have generally better teeth. That's well documented, well substantiated. And so this is quite exciting. The actual mechanism of fluoridation, the reason why it works is that if you take fluoride and you get exposed to it during the day, frequently small doses of fluoride, the fluoride helps keep the enamel re-mineralized during times when it's under stress for the things that we eat, especially the sugars. We're all aware about sodas and the intake of sugary drinks. Those things are very harmful to teeth. Well, having a low level of background fluoride helps delay that demineralization process. It helps keep the enamel healthy. It's very complicated. If you want to go into it, ask me more. We only got very brief time for a complex question like this. But I'm just very happy to take questions, by the way, on the subject. We're excited for this. You know, we're looking forward to the kids getting an education about how to take better care of themselves, make smart choices in the diet that they eat, and better care, and hopefully work on some of the access to care issues. Water fluoridation's not a cure-all, but it's super effective. Recent studies show anywhere from between a third to, you know, 40 to 30 percent decrease in decay rate. And that's pretty significant. If you can do something that costs less than a latte over a year per person and you're reducing the tooth decay, that's significant. That's pretty miraculous. That's something to be excited about, and that's why I'm here. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Adams?
I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate your courage in looking at this issue. And I should take courage, because it's going to be a big fight. This is an issue that I wanted you to take a minute and just enjoy that fresh air in this room. Just not too many years ago, this room would be swirled in cigarette smoke, because that's just the way everybody was. Every public meeting was full of cigarette smoke. It was common. In fact, there was a heck of a fight over the issue with respect to tobacco. I remember in my lifetime, the science flew from educated people saying that nicotine really wasn't harmful, didn't cause cancer. And we kind of laugh about it now. In fact, many of us can remember being on an airplane in the no smoking section. It's kind of ludicrous to think about that. And we're in a situation now where we've got certain individual groups who are wishing to force their will on others. And I think it surprises me in Sonoma County, as much as we cherish liberty and freedom of choice and opportunity and not oppression, that we have an element moving in here that's somewhat compelled by legislature to force this on us. And I think we need to be careful and not let foolish mistakes of previous administrations in this state force something upon our county that quite frankly is very questionable and is very controversial. And there's lots of really good facts. I encourage you to look, there's a number of facts that raise question. But two very important things, or three things we need to think about. One, is this safe for the environment? Is this, is there, well, as it's been investigated, there's some serious questions. Certain areas have discovered, particularly the salmon populations, significant dangers and preferential selections by fish in waters that have been exposed to low levels of fluoridation versus none. That's researchable. Check that out. Is it, so there's questions on the environment. Two, is it safe for people? And the research coming in now, and there's very little pro research, there's a lot of statistics out there, lots of confounding evidence, but the point is, is that it is not safe. Lots of very, very educated people have looked at the question of intellect being challenged by fluoride in the water. In populations where there's lots of exposure to fluoride, there's been some significant deficiency of mental function. That's why we're here, because I love children, and I love children's brains. And I feel that this is detrimental and will be. Just as cigarette smoke, we laugh about it now, this fluoride issue is going to, eventually the truth will come out, that it is not all that it's cracked up to be. That's why it's so controversial. And many countries have reversed their positions on it. Many states and areas have as well, and I'm encouraging you to look at the stats, the facts, et cetera. But it's not safe for people. And the question is, what is the safe dose? That's the problem. It's in the water, it's in the toothpaste. You know, I brush teeth with my kids. They swallow that stuff. Good luck getting them to spit it out. So there are doses that, how are you going to control that in the waters? The other question is, really, why put it in the drinking water? I mean, really? How much water do we people drink? About 1 percent of the tap water? What a waste. Most of it's going to go on lawns, it's going to filter back into our rivers and streams. Wouldn't it be better if it is so good? And there seems to be evidence that topical application in toothpaste, mouthwashes, wouldn't that be more appropriate and more cost-effective in our environment and in our pocketbooks? And so, oh, well, there's lots of people that ready to jump forward and fund this because they want to get rid of that expensive waste that's not naturally occurring. This fluorosilic acid is a byproduct fertilizer industry. It used to be largely a part of the aluminum industry as well, but they've solved the problem, mixed it with some real light. But it's still a problem for the fertilizer industry. And that's this, so they've been able to take a toxic waste that's a liability and make it a public service. So we, and unfortunately, there's a problem there. And the third thing, is it effective? Is it really effective? Even the best is to suggest, at best, fluoride in the water might improve 30 percent reduction. Only a 30 percent reduction. Whoa. The risks, is it worth it? When you can do it a better way? I think not. There's other things. We've got topical applications, we've got nutritional factors, we've got lots of other confounding factors. So you can't just jump and go, since they, you know, introduced fluoride in water, the tooth decay aspects have gone down. Fluoride is used very judiciously with sealants, topical applications, and mouthwash. I think we certainly want to give credit to those available, but the concern is making it topical, systemic, there's problems documented, problems with fluorosis beyond the rise, 40 to 50 percent. So I have those, those are my concerns. So I just encourage you to look at this, and we need to make a decision. We need to protect our children. It's controversial, I think, allowing parents the right to take care of what they think's appropriate to their children and not force it on others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll start with the board. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, I have one question for Dr. Hernandez. You didn't mention the, I tried to do a little bit of research on this on my own. I was disappointed that the board packet just included the agenda item rather than any references, because I would have, I mean, Lauren has sent us some materials, but one of those things I got just as I was walking in here tonight, so I didn't see that. Do you, some of what I saw was studies in other countries where fluoride is a naturally occurring element in the soil. And I believe it was India, where they had a lot of problems with orthopedic issues, brittle bones, that sort of thing. Is that a concern? I don't think that, I hear even Dr. Adams disputing the fact that fluoride, topical applications of fluoride prevents, you know, helps with dental hygiene. Dr. Adams, I disagree that the 30 percent reduction is minimal. I think it's huge. Now, the cost benefit analysis, of course, still needs to be made, so I agree with you on that point. But, and I realize that fluoride in the drinking water has a socioeconomic leveling component because, you know, I have a family member eight years old who has dental insurance, but his parents don't make him brush his teeth, and he doesn't go to the dentist. I took him this summer, had eight cavities, one of which is almost a pediatric, almost needed a pediatric root canal. So I don't know if they have fluoride in the drinking water where he lives or not, but obviously are there other factors there. But the appeal, I'm sure historically, to fluoridating water is that it is a socioeconomic leveller. It doesn't matter whether your parents make you brush your teeth or whether you have access to dental care, so I get that. But what about the concerns about the effect on children's health, any adverse effect on children's health, not limited to dental care?
Sure. That's a good question. The beauty with what we have now, the research, is 50 years of research now. And so we would never advocate something that we didn't think was beneficial. And we look at the risk versus benefits for everything in medicine. There is nothing that myself or Dr. Adams does as a healthcare practitioner that's 100 percent perfect. But when you look at water fluoridation, the benefit far outweighs any risk. The greatest risk that they look at is possibly what they call fluorosis, which you get a little mineral deposit on the teeth. I named somebody here, if you all think about it, I mean, everybody knows somebody who's had cancer or heart attack or root canal or cavity. How many people you know are suffering from fluorosis? I can't name anybody. And water fluoridation does not produce fluorosis. If it was, we would know about it by now.
What about those brittle bones?
And brittle bone, correct, yeah. And that's the other thing, too, is the amounts that we're talking about, at one part per million, are so low that they do have a good impact for dental effect, but they don't have any negative impact that we've seen in any reputable studies on bone structure for brittle bones or increased risk of fracture. One of the endorsements for public fluoridation is all the major medical groups, you know, orthopedic surgeons, the American Medical Associations, National Institute of Health, the Centers for Disease Control, these are all the people who would be monitoring to see if we have any sort of a systemic problem with water fluoridation causing increased problems with bone structure. Fluoride, if it's naturally in an era, like you said, in India, we're talking about where they're burning coal indoors in China, there are fluoride levels that are beyond all what we're talking about here. There's, it's just like water. Water is essential to life. It just, the other day, somebody died in California, previously in an institute somewhere, and he drank so much water, he had, basically, you have sodium deficiency, you die, you die of drinking water. So no one's, if too much water can kill you, well, not enough water, you drown. Same with fluoride. Just the right amount of fluoride gives you tooth protection with very little risk, and that's well established.
All right. Just as a process issue, I just, you know, I think since I've been on the school board, there's, this is the third time where we've been asked to address an issue that's not, you know, directly related to, I mean, sort of indirectly related to public education. One was the citing of medical marijuana clinics, which was brought to us by a community member. And we did take a position on it there. There was Lauren Ayers and the vitamin D debate, which we did, as I recall, address in our newsletters to schools. We didn't send the letter that Lauren wanted us to send, but we did hear, I think Dr. Adams you were here for that as well. And then this one, I do think this one is somewhat different than vitamin D, because our kids will be drinking this water. If, you know, we're got, whatever decision is made is going to directly affect our students. And for example, if there were a, if a decision were made to fluoridate the drinking water and there was a concern about that locally in Sonoma, I think we would have a call for non-tap water. And that, so I think this could have a direct impact on us. My concern is that I don't feel, well, I feel, you know, more informed, having heard these brief presentations, I don't feel fully informed. And this is just an information item. But I do actually think this is relevant to public education in a very direct way. Certainly, I agree with what you said, Dr. Hernandez, about the effect of children, on children of dental decay in terms of academic performance, that we hear stories about that a lot. So I don't think any of that is in dispute. But anyway, I'll pass to my fellow board members.
Board member Marsh, just last night before coming tonight, to the meeting tonight, I looked at online on Wikipedia, and I'm inviting anybody who's curious about water fluoridation, go on Wikipedia and just type in community water fluoridation or public water fluoridation. The article is very balanced. I really, I have very little disagree with almost the entire article of water fluoridation. It's quite detailed. It talks about the science, the background, the history, the, you know, all the different aspects of it, and it's very informative. So if you have further questions, I refer anybody just to go on Wikipedia and look up community water fluoridation. I think it's pretty accurate.
Well, I did look at the Wikipedia article. I also looked at the CDC and the EPA websites, but, you know, there's some question about our ability to rely sometimes on government organizations. Miss Ayers made this point very clear for many months on the, or years, on the vitamin D, that sometimes the government is behind the times. So I found those sites very instructive, but I'm wondering if I'm really getting the cutting edge. And I'm not saying I'm not, but I'm not, I'm not an expert, despite having done some research.
Fluoridation's been revisited, too. Just recently, they looked at the level of community fluoridation recommended for the nation, and they dialed it back just a little bit from 0.1 to 0.7, just to fine-tune it to say, hey, we're still getting the good protection at that level, but we're not seeing a, decreasing any potential risk for little cosmetic mineral deposits on teeth. So the issue is revisited periodically, so we still see the benefit with, you know, very few significant side effects that we can see so far. And just, there was an issue, too, brought up about the environment. Scientists have found a lack of evidence to sow an association between water fluoridation and negative impact on people, plants, or animals. Organic certified produce, like you see at Whole Foods, irrigated with fluoridated drinking water can keep its certification. So, you know, they do, it's not a mystery, we do look at the different, and we, you know, we're always welcome scientific research, if it's good research and it's well documented, I'm all for it. I welcome the research.
Okay. Thank you. So I know many dentists who don't use fluoride anymore, who refuse to use fluoride. And the bottom line, though, for this issue is that I want to be the one that decides what goes into my body. It's not Big Brother who decides for me. And so I like the pillars. I like the other four things. Let's educate people. Let's teach them how to eat the right foods. I didn't write down the other things, but I don't want anything going in my body that I don't choose to go into my body. So one of the reasons I'm on the school board is education. And so that's what I want to do, is educate people. And educate people, the pros and the cons, the different opinions, and then let them make their decisions about it. And because, like Helen said about, this is why I felt it's so important that we have this, when Lauren brought this, that we have this on our agenda item, because it does go to our students in our drinking water. And so that's the first issue for me, is that I want to be able to decide, and I think that it's important that all of us get to choose. And parent choice is really, that was one of the platforms why I ran to be on the school board, was parent choice. And this encompasses parent choice. So then the other issue now is the issue about, okay, is fluoride good or not? So, you know, there's studies this way, there's studies that way. We can look at many different issues. Chemical fluoride is not the same as natural fluoride. Just like a chemical pill is not the same as a plant, and the plant, the chemical pills came from the plants. I mean, we can discuss this issue all day long. But I believe that putting a Band-Aid on the solution, putting a Band-Aid on it is not the solution, so going to the root of, you know, teaching about nutrition and food and things like that. We all agree about tooth decay not being good, so really, that has no issue in here. We agree tooth decay is not good. Oh, anecdotally, that's where I was going. Anecdotally, I had fluoride my whole life, because I grew up in America. And my husband had no fluoride his whole life, and he grew up in Switzerland. And not only that, he didn't brush his teeth, he did nothing, okay? He has the best teeth in our whole household, and I don't. And so, of course, that's just an anecdote, and many of us can have those. But, you know, anecdotally, those issues are important. Let's see. So I would like people to look at genetics and looking at the food issue, and that is, for me, that's how I feel the root. So I think that's the biggest thing that I have to say about this issue, is those two points, is the parent choice and our choice, and about educating the people and letting them choose, and allowing them to choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Gary?
Well, I disagree. Somebody needs to, I suppose. So our norms that Dan mentioned, we have a section called Rules and Responsibilities. So the reason I, I just, I wish this wasn't on our agenda. We make long-term plans based upon our mission and strategic plan. We hire, advise, support, and evaluate the superintendent. We recognize the authority of the board rests with the board as a whole, not with individual board members. We allocate resources to support strategic plan goals with a balanced budget. We understand the distinction between board and staff roles. So I think we're outside our norms, and I think the norms, when we adopted them, I think they serve a really good purpose. Government service can go off into the weeds far too easily. We had Pivot Learning was our consultant a few years back, and they gave us some wisdom as they ended their relationship with us. Focus, intensity, and coherence. And I was going to do this in my trustee report, but these are the things that I would rather be talking about for this half hour. I also went on the internet. I spent full days, I spent maybe three days looking into this until the light bulb went on for me. This isn't my issue. I would be better off spending three days doing research on something more focused on our strategic plan. So I would rather be hearing about during this half hour, gang presence, which was involved in the arrests out at Larson Winery last spring. We had former students within that bust. What can the police tell us about gangs in Sonoma, and how does that reach down to our schools? College debt. We are striving for all of our kids to go to college. Well, it turns out, a huge issue, a real issue, is that kids are starting college, they're not finishing, but they're leaving with a lot of debt. I'd like to talk about that, because as we tell our kids how great college is, we should also be giving them the full picture, that they can also get into a pretty deep hole. Our strategic plan indicates, quote, "an educational system which our parents may not know." Well, what is that system? What are its parts? How do we guide our parents specifically? Again, these are targeted at our strategic plan. The strategic plan refers to a challenge of, quote, "too many children start off behind", close quote. So I, well, I'll keep going. What the heck? I don't think I'm the longest talking board member yet. Which is a better strategy to close this gap? Two years of preschool or successive yearly interventions without preschool? The strategic plan refers to highly effective teaching. What is it? What specifics have we chosen for 1213, this year? Or I guess, sorry, this is 1314. Is it a principal call, a curriculum and instruction call, or both? Is highly effective teaching a gift or a skill set to grow through practice, like soccer? I did not want to be studying fluoride, and yet I did. And it became really quite an enormous issue for me. The reason I object to doing it here now is that we are using terms like oppression, forcing on us, foolish mistakes, very questionable, controversial. It is not safe. I love children, and I love children's brains, which would indicate, doctor, that I guess that means I don't. I also love children and children's brains. So when a statement is made that is so in your face, it puts me and others, well, me, on the defensive. Fluorosis is a yellowing of the teeth. And so I just want anybody that heard fluorosis to know that it is a yellowing of the teeth enamel. Protect our children like I'm not. The CDC, my dentist, Dr. DiVincenzi, who I think the world of, she thinks it's a gift also. She is aware that when we impose things on the general population, there is going to be pushback. She had a very reasoned picture of this thing, and I just, I really thanked her for her response to me. I've been reading this John Hattie book this summer called Visual Learning. It is full of 800 compiled data studies. It is us from Australia, so it's not even us, which makes it frankly more welcoming to me. It purports to summarize which educational strategies are highly effective and which are not very effective. Is it a relevant book? This book states that second and third chances is highly effective, giving kids lots of chances at redemption. It states that whole language is very ineffective. Oops. That's something that I had to do for two years when I was teaching. Well, didn't have to, but that's what we focused on. Teacher-student relationships is highly effective. Class size reduction is not very effective. Yes, there are counterintuitive conclusions in here. And so this is what I spent my summer on, and instead, I'm spending the first half hour of my first board meeting talking about a controversial, passionate, emotional topic that is not within my purview. And it just saddens me.
We're at about, we're at about the 15-minute level, but Sal, you haven't had an opportunity.
Well, to me, I would just say, I feel like I'm definitely not in control of the situation as far as the ultimate decision. I just learned this, actually. But I think the 30%, the only thing I have to say is that I think the 30% is pretty significant, as far as the people that will never know anything about fluoride and that it could benefit. I think that is a pretty significant number. I'm thinking social disadvantaged people. That's the only thing I can think of that stands out as significant to me, so that's it.
Great. Well, yeah, yes.
First of all, I, with respect, this is a statement, I did not mean to offend anyone. I said I love children's brains. There was no implication that anyone here didn't. It's my Because my, my point was that the reason I'm here is that I believe that this is a threat to the intellectual promise of our children, and when you put something that's in the water, that's a known toxin, and that we have an incredible epidemic right now in autistic spectral disorders. And we are at a loss. There's lots of ideas as to what's going to happen, clearly, something, some things in our environment are challenging our children and causing some incredible problems. And this may be a factor in it. It certainly is a known toxin, and some people are going to be much more sensitive than others on the bell curve. At the moment, I said, I said that 30% at best, so I didn't say that we can give fluoridation of water 30% credit. It's very controversial as to what, what actually is doing, because there's so many other things going on. You've got fluoride in toothpaste, you've got mouthwash, you have topical applications. Every dentist will tell you the best way to deliver fluoride to the tooth is topically with a sealant, with that kind of dose. It's too random out there when you put it in the water. Who's going to drink more, who's going to drink less? There's just, my, my point is that we have some, lots of questions, and lots of very educated people have published some really good stuff in the peer review that says, hey, we need to really take a look at, at the safety issues, that's all. So no offense to anybody. I said I love the brain, was not in case anybody here didn't. Obviously, you do, that's why you're here, you love children, and I applaud you all for all of the, all the meetings that you sit through and all the commentary that you have to endure. And I appreciate you taking some time to hear this. And I think it's important because, you know, the community's going to be looking for some help on these issues, and I think you should be informed. And I think it is, it is related to these children's brains, because this is a process that's going to come on us in other issues, just like the smoking issue. And not that long ago, I read the Surgeon General endorsed smoking as, as a, as a health benefit, and Surgeon General of this nation. So government sometimes doesn't get it right in the early stages. So let's just keep our minds open and be courageous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As, as you can see, we're scratching the surface right now, and we're into this discussion about 19 minutes. So I don't usually write down any remarks, but I did, and I want to give you some insight to about why things come before this board and why they don't, and then we'll wrap up. Why is this item on the agenda at all, and why isn't this Board of Trustees voting on a fluoride resolution to be sent to the Board of Supervisors? I've heard both of these questions recently. If you read the bylaws of this board, we're charged with conducting the business of this school district within our jurisdiction in an efficient manner. And to do that, we meet once a month, hopefully we make decisions before 10 o'clock at night, because we get pretty tired. And sometimes we meet more frequently, and the idea is that we do our business in public according to the, to the provisions of the Ralph Brown Act, so that we're transparent and you, there's no backdoor deals here. In fact, we don't know what each other is thinking most of the time. To keep things moving and as focused as possible, the superintendent sits down and prepares an agenda, working with the president. Now, a member of the community or a trustee may request that an item be on the agenda, and both of these things happened in this case. Luanne and I know and respect the individuals of all, we recognize their passion and dedication. But normally, frankly, I would not have placed this item on our agenda. There is, as Lauren well knows, there's one opportunity for three minutes to say this is school-related and to speak to items not on the agenda in public comment. But I did give myself, I did put it on the agenda, frankly, to, to give myself a chance to explain another viewpoint. Personally, I think this is a medical, dental, public health, political, ethical, you name it, matter that parents should discuss with their healthcare provider. I think it is outside of our purview, our jurisdiction, both in terms of our expertise and our mission. I am fully aware that fluoride has some effect on the whole side, on the whole child, and I'm aware that a lot of factors do. I suggest that we could probably sit down and discuss chlorine, and salt, and sugar, and gluten, and a number of topics, and they probably need to be discussed in everybody's household. Coincidentally, the topic of immunization comes up later in our board policy reading tonight. Well, I heard debate on fluoridation and immunization my whole life, including discussions about communist plots as I grew up in the level-minded arena of Arizona in the 1950s. But as happened then, I was pretty confident we wouldn't resolve this issue here tonight. What we have done is raised the question, and I think that's great. Do I take all this lightly? No, I do not. Am I right in not wanting to include this item on the agenda or vote on it? I don't know, because you know what? It all is a judgment call. I do know that there is a guideline for me for focusing on what the priorities of this board are, and ironically, we're going to cover that in our next agenda item, and it's called the strategic plan. So I'm, I'm hearing a little bit of Gary in that one. And if we're redundant, it's because we don't get to compare notes before the meeting. The way that this board works, I don't have any idea of the outcome of what a vote might have been. I suspect it might have been a split vote. And either way it would have gone, I think we would have disappointed somebody here in this audience. And they might have thought, these people really don't know what they're doing. And in either case, I think they would have been absolutely correct. We are not experts. In my view, we don't know enough, and it would be presumptuous, presumptuous for us to be voting to advise the Board of Supervisors. That said, I do thank everyone for the information you have given us. I think it is useful for us to have this flag raised and to do our research and think about it. And personally, I will continue to track this issue with great interest. So I'm going to call this to an end. If you wanted to stick around to the end of the, of the meeting, tonight's eight agenda items and the consent agenda, we could possibly continue the discussion, but at least fluoride is on our minds, and hopefully we learned a little bit about it tonight. And I hope that some of this makes sense as to how we view these, these items. So thank you.